To order this regular meeting of the Andover Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission. I see on the call Commissioner Monroe and alternate Ed Smith present. Commissioner Larson previously indicated that he would not be able to attend tonight's meeting. Do we have any suggested changes or additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll go now to item four of our agenda, which is approval of the August first two thousand twenty-two regular meeting minutes. Give you a moment to peruse the minutes and ask if there are any changes or additions. Okay. Commissioner Monroe indicates none. I'm getting some feedback here. Anybody know where it's coming from?
Like try to sign in again.
Okay, yeah, I see Ed's getting an echo too. Let me check my settings here. I'm.
Mine went away, the echo.
Yeah, it's clear for me too. No, but I did hear that. I did hear it before.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah, I heard it before and it was good now on this end, so.
Okay, well, I'm glad one of these problems disappear magically rather than having to call tech support. Okay, so I'll move to approve the minutes of the August first two thousand twenty-two minutes. And ask for a second.
A second.
Okay, so motion and second. And again, with no additions or corrections, we're asking for the approval of the minutes. Let's see if those in favor. Well, I guess we'll do a roll call. Commissioner Monroe.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Okay, and I also vote aye, so the motion carries three zero zero. Next, we have any opportunity for public comment? Questions relevant to today's agenda? Again, seeing none, we will move then to new business where we will take receipt and discuss any business before the commission. We have I think all the public that's here has some business before the commission, so we'll proceed immediately then to new business. Item six A. Application number twenty-two-one-one from the Andover Lake Management Association, which proposes to remove aquatic vegetation in the south coast of Andover Lake using a hydro rake. We have the application materials. Of course, we're posted online. And I see that we have Oops, where'd he go? Oh, there he is. You just moved on the screen, Jeff. You're in the middle, now you're off the left. Okay. There you are. So I'll ask Mr. Hayes to present the application here.
Yeah, so what we're looking at doing in recent years, you may have noticed that we've had lily pads that have expanded in the cove from that they were in a small area on the, what is that, the west side of the of the South Cove? And now there are several patches that are expanding into the main cove itself. We would like to hydro rake those out as well as we have some some cattails that are growing now that have moved quite a ways out from shore in several places, and we would like to also remove those using the hydro rake. The hydro rake is basically a dredge with a grappling hook on it that will pull these out. And we have, we'll be putting them into a dumpster and hauling them away.
Okay. Yeah, I know the the application materials included some of what you just discussed. Showed us a photograph of the hydro rake type equipment, which appears to be a vehicle on tracks with some gripper arms at the bow.
I think it's actually a boat. I think it's actually, yeah.
Okay, so it can float once it gets onto the water then. Okay.
Yes.
All-terrain vehicle, I guess we call it. So, any questions from commissioners about this application?
Chair Elliott, I do have a question about that.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Monroe.
Um. Jeff, with the, if you're going to be pulling all that stuff up, should you be making any kind of like a border to keep it in that cove area, or is that just way yada?
Yeah. We asked the contractor about that, and he said, especially where the cove is so shallow, that you generally are not going to have an issue with that getting into the lake. It's certainly not getting any amount of significant sediment into the lake because it's a it's a quick process. It's, you know, one grab and gone. And it'll settle out pretty quickly. I will also say that we are, you know, we did the we did the herbicide this year. We would prefer to use hydro raking, so this is a bit of a test case for us as well. We don't really like the idea of putting herbicide in the lake. So if this works out successfully, we will probably consider additional applications for hydro raking in other areas of the lake to control some of the other weeds.
Okay, Commissioner Smith, did you have any questions regarding this application?
No, I'm good. I just removed a bunch of cattails from my little vernal pool, so I totally understand Jeff's situation.
Yep.
Okay, well, that does bring me to the question of just really why are we anxious to remove cactails and water lilies? Why is Alma?
Yeah, because they are, they're taking over the cove. If we allow this to continue, our cove will be a water lily pond. And the cattails have moved substantially out from shore. There's one area where they've they've probably come 20 feet out from where they were five years ago. So the concern is, we want to maintain the lake. We want to make sure that, you know, as these things happen, we can we can kind of maintain the shoreline that we have now.
Okay, so maintaining the shoreline is the key here. I wondered if there had been, you know, complaints or concerns raised by homeowners along the cove, or what, you know, what what concerns actually brought this?
There have, yeah, there have been. I mean, I'm one of the homeowners. Some of the cattails are in front of my house. But there have been others also that have complained that, you know, NADA, I don't know if you know NADA or Cenus. Her shoreline is almost all cattails now. But yeah, it's it's really just a question of trying to maintain what we have. We want to keep the cove viable. You know, that's a good catch for things that flow into the lake through that river. So we don't want to lose the cove. We don't want it to fill in because that stuff will all flow into the lake then. And we won't have the sediment trap that we have now in the cove.
I should think that actually cactails would make a better sediment trap. But that's not your thing right there. Okay. We have.
Yeah.
One other question?
Yes.
I'm sure this has been talked about. I just haven't been in the conversation. I mean, are you thinking that maybe you should consider dredging that area?
Well, that's kind of what this is. We don't want to bring a dredge in because then you have a you have a lot of material that you have to get rid of, and that's a pretty disruptive process. This is more like a set of a grappling hook that that does have also has a suction on it. So, I mean, would we like to dredge the cove? You know, that would take some study to see whether or not that would would be good. But this is something that's done pretty regularly to eradicate some of these weeds.
Thank you.
Okay, well, any other questions or comments regarding the application? Oh, and the other thing was, when would you when were you contemplating having the work conducted?
We want to do it just before we we draw it down for the winter. So we'd like to do it in October. That's why we're in here this week, this month. I understand you guys don't approve the same month, and we wouldn't get an approval until the October meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So that's our timing is that we want to get it done this fall, and that'll give it the winter, obviously, to settle out as well.
Okay. Well, as you know, we are simply considering or we're receiving the application and discussing it this meeting. We won't be able to act on it until October, so I guess if, again, any other questions or comments? If not, I will thank you, Jeff, for your contribution or for presenting this, and we can then move on to our next item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you as well.
Okay, the next item on the agenda being an application number twenty-two dash one-two by Mark Reynolds, an engineer on behalf of Judy Connolly, the property owner, who I believe is on the call. And it's for basically driveway crossing of wetlands for a single-family residence at what will be, well, is lot twenty-two on Lake Road. So is who's going to? Oh, I should also note that this is an application that's, as it were revived, it had been approved in two thousand and five, but was, of course, five-year term limit, so it's a new application for our purposes. However, we have some history on it in terms of the approval and the conditions that were attached to that approval. So who was going to present the application or present the proposed project?
I'd be happy to do that, and I appreciate I appreciate the background there. Um, is it possible I can share my screen? Would that please the commission? I could run through a couple of slides. I think it would be helpful.
I think our our agent is in charge of the meeting, so he's got the administrator privileges.
It should be set up so you can share it now, I think.
Yeah, I think it is, so I'll start that now. Okay, so can everyone hear me and see the and see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, excellent. So this is just an overall to get you dialed in as to where we are. The proposed activity is on the lot that's inside the green circle here on the east side of the lake. This is a snippet of the aerial photo from the GIS system. It's it just gives you an indication of the property. It's a wooded parcel. It's between four eleven and four oh seven Lake Road. You can see there's a house here on this side and one right here. These two houses follow largely the same configuration that we'll be proposing. Again, the mostly wooded, the topography is from high in the north to low in the south, so the surface drainage is in from a northerly to a southerly direction here, and you can see Lake Road along the bottom. So here is the proposed plan. And as 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 George mentioned, there was a plan that was approved in two thousand and five. This plan is substantially the same as that. The wetland area is depicted here in yellow. It's depicted based on the same delineation as that original application. We walked the site. We have no reason to think that there would be any significant change in the wetland boundary. The yellow line here is the is the hundred-foot buffer. I'm showing the, you know, the driveway in the house here, and then we've located the septic to the rear of the property, which is the furthest away from the wetland areas and would be would occur based on a pump, a pump system, because that's up gradient. So on this site plan, the highest area is here, and then it drains towards the wetlands. Get a little closer on the site here and give some more detail for everybody. And kind of let you know some of the features. So as I mentioned, the driveway crossing the wetlands would necessitate culvert pipe. So we're proposing a fifteen-inch culvert pipe right in this location, and I'll zoom in it, zoom into it in a little bit. The house is here. The septic is furthest up in the back. We'll also be proposing, as is the requirement of the zoning regulation for nutrient allocation, a rain garden in this front area of the property. The type of rain garden that I would propose would be not an excavated area, but rather a berm area to catch runoff. It'll kind of fit with the natural grade here because you notice the topography in this direction. So the driveway and the roof leaders can be caught in this area to meet the requirements that seven, seven point six in the zoning regulations for nutrient man nutrient allocation. So erosion sediment controls, I'm showing dashed yellow lines where soap fence are proposed, some around the work area, and then, of course, along the sides of the driveway, you know, from the start of the buffer all the way out to the street. In terms of some numbers here, we're estimating about a thousand square feet of area of wetlands that would be disturbed. That's approximately from the wetland line to the line is about fifty feet and with about an average of twenty feet. It'll be a little wider at the culvert, a little skinnier over in this area to create the the culvert, the driveway, and the little bit of fill that goes with it. Upland review area is in the order of like twenty-five hundred square feet, and that's really just the extension of the driveways in this area and in this area. So we have a standard erosion sediment control plan on the second sheet of the plan, along with our septic design notes, silt fence and and E and S sequence in notes. This is the zoomed in on the area of the culvert pipe. You can see we'll have a rock apron on either side of it for erosion protection and and then a silt fence, you know, to protect the wetlands during construction. That's the extent of it there, and so I think I'll leave the slide up here if anyone has any questions. We did, obviously, whenever we're going to have a an impact to a wetland, we look at alternatives. There simply aren't any on this site. The wetland separates the buildable portion of the parcel from from the street. As you can see, there's only just a small area of property in the front that's all within the front. The fifty-foot front yard setback. The lot, you know, is an existing lot. We're not proposing. This is not a subdivision. We're not proposing this lot. It's there. It's the way, it's the only feasible way that I can see to develop the property for a single-family residence. Be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, any questions from commissioners? Mr. Monroe?
I have a question. Just curious, is the symbol that overlays the driveway where it contacts Lake Road, does that mean permeable surface?
Nope, that's our symbol for the temporary construction entrance pad, so that's detailed on the second sheet, and what that is is a an area of two-inch crushed stone that's placed down during construction to prevent the tracking of sediments onto the street and surrounding area.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Commissioner Monroe, again, did you have any?
I do have a question. I don't know if I can how to ask it. That wetlands there, is that? It seems like, is that like a? Is it just end right here on the south side, and does it end right there on the north side, or does it keep going?
Um, right, I can understand your question because of the drafting here. The on the north side right up here, I understand that to be the the northern extent of this particular wetland. There are there are other wetland systems in the surrounding area, but I understand that to be the extent of it because as you move north from there, the grade, the grade goes up. So, but as you move south from here, um, it's not the case. I'm going to just jump back a couple of slides. So you can see here, as you move south, this is down gradient, so I expect that historically, the wetland extended through this area, but, you know, also there's a driveway crossing here. So I think that the that, you know, this line, let me go back one more. This line segment between WF nine and ten is unfortunate drafting at this point. I don't have any assurance that this doesn't extend further to the south, although just south of here, you'll find the driveway to four oh seven Lake Road.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, I had a couple of questions regarding the application. It seemed to me that, okay, in the application, it states that there are no water courses on the site and that there would therefore be no water course impact. Yet, the photographs that were submitted by the agent, especially the ones from January of this year, showed pretty clearly that there's a seasonal water course on the property. Now, I I'm not exactly sure where that is in relation to the driveway and the culvert, but I suspect that the culvert might be designed to to capture that seasonal runoff and keep it from overflowing said driveway.
Um, okay, yeah, that that may be the case. I think the application was an attempt to best characterize the activity. There's a thousand square feet of disturbance in here. If the it a part of that thousand square feet of disturbance may very well be a, what, twenty-four, twenty-five-foot section of an intermittent water course. I I'm not, I think I I'm satisfied with that characterization, the way you just described it. It doesn't change the fact that there's a drainage area of about eight acres that's up gradient of the driveway at this point, which this collects, and that's the purpose of the culvert as a release to to that area. I think it's perhaps an intermittent water course, but I understood the application to be the application form to be like in a case where there's like a a not a seasonal water course, but a but a like a permanent water course, like a brook. But I mean, we can, we could, we'd happy to amend our application in any way that you'd feel like it'd be more appropriate. I don't have it right in front of me, so I apologize.
That's okay. I encourage you to work with our wetlands agent on that. I'm just raising the question because, as they say, you know, from statutory perspective, a water course is a water course is a water course. So
Okay.
There's that. The other thing is that I didn't see anything on the on the two pages of site plan that we were provided with the application that were posted online. You had detail for such things as sediment control and septic system, but again, no engineering details for the culvert per se. And since that's what we're particularly looking at approving here, we certainly like to see that addressed in the application supporting documents.
Understood, and that may have been an oversight on our part, but I'm the design engineer, and our intent is to have at least a ten-by-ten apron of rock apron on either side of the culvert and and you know, flared ends on either side. So it would follow the BMP for outlet protection as it's as it's listed in the in the DEP's manual and and otherwise, besides that, this is basically a low-head culvert, meaning, you know, we're only going to have a couple of feet, the minimum amount of fill over the culvert, but we'll be happy to provide an update with detail for that.
Okay, good, that's. Okay, and finally, again, the notes include that the driveway corridor through the wetlands is to have removal of invasive species and planting of natives such as hibiscus, blueberry, you know, other wetland-adapted species, which, of course, much to encourage. And I would encourage too, as a, as a word mitigation, to see if the removal of invasives could be extended, perhaps further into the water course. I don't, I couldn't tell from the photographs, and I hadn't been at that site in a long time, but my suspicion would be that there's barberry and bittersweet and maybe a few others in that on that property. And this is more of a personal point of view than a regulatory one, but, you know, any efforts to remove and to eradicate those woody invasives is strongly encouraged.
Yeah, I can appreciate that. I deal with that at my place constantly, so I know, I know where you're coming from. You can throw Japanese knotweed in there too.
Oh, God. Get out the Triazine or the pasture pro.
I just call I just call it exercise. To keep popping.
Yeah.
But no, well, I think every 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 effort can be made. And I'll review I'll view that with the owner and, you know, and make sure that your message is conveyed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's the extent of the questions that I had. And again, I'll ask if there are any other questions or comments from the commissioners or, again, Agent Wagner, obviously, you've seen the site a couple of times based on the photographic evidence.
Yeah, I mean, it seems it was very different. Like you said, there was actually like almost a water course, and you could kind of, when I went there last week to take the pictures for the meeting, it was, you know, it was quite a bit different. You could kind of see where the water would run down through there. There's like barely.
There's a stage two drought, so.
Yeah, yeah, I went right after the rainstorm, hoping there would be a little more water, but it still wasn't, so it's probably all groundwater coming out of that hill and yeah, the the stream channel really wasn't very well defined. But you could kind of make out where it was. It wasn't, you know, just a depression, but it's basically flat in that area.
Okay, well, that answered my question too about the the water course. It's kind of ill-defined water course, as it were, maybe, you know, seasonal runoff more than a water course per se. If there's no clear channel, then it wouldn't qualify. Okay, let me look over at my notes. Okay, that's that's really it as far as I'm concerned. Again, if there are any other questions or comments from the commissioners? I do appreciate the presentation and like the graphics. Again, if you could submit those to our agent as a part of the application, I think it would be well received to supplement the detail, the formal plan uh, formal plan, uh, that, uh, was attached to to the application that was posted online.
Happy to do that.
Good, good. Okay, well, if there are no further questions or comments, we'll, uh, obviously, uh, hold off on any further consideration of the application until our October meeting, uh, which time we should be able to, um, uh, make a vote on, uh, on approval, uh, for that application.
I appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Okay, and thank you. Okay. So, uh, moving on, got to get back to the agenda. Okay, yeah, item seven, we've got some, uh, agent uh, report items to consider. So, Agent Wagner, take it away.
I had, uh, two upland review area approval this month. Um, one was a, uh, it was fifty-seven Handy Road. It was, it's a two-car metal garage, so they're excavating out a little bit, putting a concrete pad now and then putting a, uh, metal garage up. It's within the two hundred foot upland review area. Snookemuck River is pretty far away. It's a hundred and forty feet, so it's in between Handy Road and the house. Um, so it didn't seem like it would have much of an impact. It's currently in, uh, in zoning right now because it's, uh, it's a flood insurance floodplain, so it might, it might, may or may not could build right now. So, uh, and then the second one is, um, three sixty-nine Lake Road. It's a, it was, yeah, one thousand gallon cracked. The septic tank had a cracked top, so they replaced it with a thousand gallon plastic one. Um, and all those plans are available on the website for viewing if you need to. It was like a one-day project that they came in and that. Um, and then the last thing was, uh, the Andover Auto Parts property, uh, Mr. Hank Bruner had pointed out a burnable pool that had some tires and wheels in it. That was back there. And, uh, they had some parts tags from Andover Auto Parts in them. Um, so I had sent Mr. Genovese, the owner of Andover Auto Parts, a letter. Um, asking him to remove them. I'm not sure who put them in there. I'm guessing maybe some some kids went in and took them to the top of the hill and rolled them down, or I don't know. It seemed like the auto parts store would store wheels in a in a vernal pool. But, yeah, he went and, uh, cleaned them up. Um, so he said, I haven't been out there to check, but, uh, he'd sent me a letter saying it was cleaned up.
Okay. Um, there are a couple of items that were hanging from, uh, last month about the, um, well, of course, Jed isn't here, so maybe move, but he had asked about, uh, some work at one ninety-six Lake Road. And also wanted to, uh, see if there's any further follow-up on the work at, uh, twenty-five Cider Mill Road. Uh, last meeting, you'd indicated that they were going to begin work on that uh, project that involved, uh, crossing, uh, Stallow Brook. And I wonder if that had, uh, if they commenced on that.
Yeah, I drove by and, uh, I didn't see anything, but the really, I mean, the work was all in back of the house and all. He was gonna do, all the contractor was gonna do is drive through the brook, um, with his, uh, excavator, so.
Right. Were they, weren't they gonna put down, uh, some kind of temporary bridging material?
Yeah, he, that's what we were talking about last month. He had called, um, and asked about it, and the water was low enough. He was like, we could just drive over if we put some you know, blocks on the sides of the bank to protect the bank and then just drive over the rocks and then, uh, so, you know, we looked at it, there are hardly any water flowing. Um,
Yeah, don't I know.
It seemed like it would be a good a good alternative. Um, it's probably even less invasive than putting a bunch of boards in the in the, uh, in the river.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the timber, putting the timbers down would uh, dislodge the rocks and sediment and all that anyhow. Okay, uh, and then there was something about a nutrient allocation, but again, since that's
Yeah, that was, um, I think Jim is still working on that now. I asked him for a report last week, and I think he's still trying to figure that out. I think they were just gonna do some dry wells, surround the roof drains into dry wells, and I think that would take care of their their nutrient load reduction, so.
Okay, good, good. Okay, um, well, moving on then, uh, in our other business commission vacancies, uh, we still have them. I did contact, uh, former Commissioner Megan Lally. Uh, and she indicated that basically the, uh, you know, the conditions that had led her to resign from the commission in the first place, this Zoom meetings, uh, were still a concern. Uh, I guess there, well, first of all, there are issues with doing it from home with kids. And secondly, uh, eye strain from being on the screen all the time. But she did indicate that should the commission in the future decide to resume in-person meetings, uh, she would consider, uh, rejoining. And since she was a valuable member and even served as chairman for a point, I think that that's, uh, something worth noting and keeping, uh, in mind for the future. Otherwise, uh, I'm not aware of any bites or, uh, indication of interest uh, from, uh, anyone who's looking to join our effort. That brings us, okay, uh, I'll ask if anybody else has any bright ideas for recruitment. Just let me know. See what we can do. Uh, that brings us then to item eight B. Uh, there's an ongoing effort, uh, and Hank Bruner is here to talk about a proposal to, well, basically an application for funding to purchase what is known as the Ladano property. Hank, if you could take it away?
Sure, um, uh, Joe, do I have, uh, the ability to share screen?
Um, yeah, it should be, yeah, it should be set for you to share.
Okay, hold on. Let me see if I can, uh, call something up for you folks. Let's see. And thank you for, uh, adding me to the agenda, uh, for tonight's meeting. Hopefully, this will go on. It's spinning.
Hmm.
Oh, good, I'm getting a, not liking the process. Now, here we go. Can folks see that?
Doesn't come up on, oh, there, it's not coming up. Hank has started screen sharing.
There we go. All right. So let me, um, uh, everybody sees it?
Yep.
Good, all right. Let me just get the right slide I want. Okay, so the the town is, um, I don't know if folks are familiar, but the Department of Environmental Protection, uh, generally each year has funding to, um, support acquisition of properties uh, through a cost-sharing program with municipalities. Um, it's called the, the, uh, Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Program. And this year, there are, I think, five million dollars in the the funds, and I think there's another five million in two thousand twenty-three. Uh, and they launched that application process a few months back, inviting municipalities to submit for properties that they're interested in. Um, the Conservation Commission had recommended to planning and zoning, oh, several months back now, um, the the potential acquisition of what's known as the Ladano property, which is a hundred and sixty-two acre piece of undeveloped land that sits between Boston Hill Road and Shoddy Mill Road. If, uh, it's basically almost diagonally across from the transfer station. So I have it outlined on that with, you know, the aerial image there. Uh, you can see Shoddy Mill Road up to the top, and you can see Boston Hill Road is sort of down to the bottom, bottom area. Um, the reason we we selected that was because it is in our, uh, one of our open space corridors in town, which are the priority areas for open space uh, acquisition and for conservation easements and conservation work based on our two thousand fifteen Plan of Conservation and Development. Where an analysis was done to look at, um, you know, the areas where, uh, you know, based on natural resources, recreational potential, um, agriculture and so forth, one of the best areas in town that really support that. This is in the the area called the Western Highlands Open Space Corridor. And it's a a fairly large corridor that includes, you can see it there on the the, uh, the lower side, it includes Bishop Swamp Wildlife Management Area down to the southern end. Um, all the way up to the large town-owned parcel to the north there is the eighty-plus acres of, uh, town-owned land that abuts the transfer station and connects to the Hop River State Park Trail. In between that, the light green is the Ladano parcel I just mentioned. And then just to the west of that is an additional thirty-eight acres of town open space where you may recall, we, um, acquired, I believe, a year ago. That was donated from the Northern Connecticut Land Trust as well as a private landowner, Thomas Talbot, who donated seventeen acres, I believe. Um, and then there's a town holding, there was already any existing town holding there. Um, and Tom Talbot, the landowner who donated previously, it also has a four-acre inholding that he's willing to donate. That's the lower little square you see, cut into the lower green, um, that he's willing to donate as part of this initiative. Uh, so it's an area that, uh, based on its natural resource values, it has core forest, and as I'll show you, some significant wetland connections. Um, we made the recommendation that the town should pursue purchasing as it is on the market. Um, this will give you an idea of the wetland connections. If you take a look at the, um, the dots, you may remember from my vernal pool presentation. Uh, those are all the locations of vernal pools. There are fifteen of them located in that one hundred and sixty-two acre parcel. And to give you a sense of, um, how unique that density is, if you think of the seven hundred and twenty acre, seven hundred and twenty-three acre Bishop Swamp Wildlife Management Area, that has nine to ten vernal pools. If you think of the the five hundred and ten acre, at least that's the amount of acres in Andover, uh, Nathan Hale State Forest, that has nine to ten vernal pools. This hundred and sixty-two acres has fifteen. In addition, if you look at the, uh, the other colored swaths there, they are, um, poorly or very poorly drained wetland soils is the light purple. And then where it overlaps green, you get this blue coloration um, or green coloration, which are basically freshwater forest shrub wetland systems based on the National Wetland Inventory Map. So it's fairly wetland-rich. Um, there's a, um, as you can see, there's also a water course, um, on the eastern side there that connects that that wetland system. And then, of course, on the western side, just outside of the boundary of the parcel is the Burnup Brook System, which is a high-quality cold water stream um, that's recognized by the DEP. Uh, and this parcel falls within that watershed. So the buffering capacity of a hundred and sixty-two acres of forested land is provides significant, um, value, uh, for protecting that cold water stream habitat, especially giving, given that vernal pools and cold water streams are two of the habitat types that are considered extremely vulnerable to changing climatic conditions. Uh, so for a lot of those reasons, we've recommended that we pursue this. We've gone through the ta- the process of working with planning and zoning. We went through Board of Selectmen last week, um, and they approved using open space funds in the town for the purchase, along with matching from the state. They also approved our submission of an application to the state, which is due on September thirtieth. Um, and they approved us entering negotiations with the realtor for the prop, for the parcel, um, which, uh, we may have by the end of today have made an, already have made an offer on the the parcel with several contingencies. One being that we obviously would successfully have a grant award from the state. Um, and the other that we would successfully pass, uh, a town vote for for, um, uh, acquisition of the parcel, which would occur later in the process. Uh, so what what we're requesting from the inland wetlands commission is as part of the application, we want to, that the state obviously is interested in how strong the application or the parcel uh, conforms to the state's, to the town's Plan of Conservation Development. But also, they're looking, you know, do you have support from your your key agencies in your town, uh, and boards in your town, which include planning and zoning, conservation commissions, and inland wetland commissions. Planning and zoning already has a support letter. Conservation Commission is working on one. And we're requesting, um, a support letter from the inland wetlands commission that we would be able to include with the application to, um, to the, uh, to the state. Uh, so that's, that's kind of where we are on it, on the, on the project. Um, I am writing the grant proposal. I'm pretty much complete with most of the narrative, with the narrative. Uh, and just finished up the maps today. You're actually looking at some of the maps that will go in with the, uh, it'd be inserted into the application. Um, and we're now compiling, uh, um, support letters and then going through an internal review process with, uh, town administrator and, um, uh, planning and zoning folks uh, to, uh, you know, to, uh, just, you know, make that the proposal, make sure we've dotted all the i's and we have all the pieces from the checklist gearing up for, uh, September thirtieth submission to, um, the program. It's highly competitive. We don't know what our chances are. Um, it depends, obviously, on the other applications that come in and the parcels that they're looking at. Um, the, just to give you a sense of it, the town, the the state will pay up to sixty-five percent of the appraised value of the property. Um, we're asking for fifty-six percent of the appraised value and using the remainder of that would be covered through Town Open Space Fund, which would not use up all of our Town Open Space Fund. Um, so, uh, that would leave us, I think, about, uh, eighteen thousand dollars remaining in the Open Space Fund. So that's, that's kind of where we are in the process, and I guess I'll answer any questions that folks might have about the parcel or where the process.
Okay, well, I've, uh, I walked that parcel many, many years ago uh, as a member of the Conservation Commission and, uh, when we were, uh, when the town, uh, first selectman was trying to, uh, spearhead negotiations to acquire the property. Unfortunately, that all fell through. So here we are back again. This time, however, I think we're better chance in terms of, uh, first of all, the possibility of state support, and secondly, the, um, existence of a dedicated Town Open Space Fund. Uh, so that, you know, this money that doesn't affect your mill rate. And, uh, I I agree that it's, uh, a high-value area for conservation. Uh, I guess my question, uh, would be, um, what, um, restrictions on use would be entailed in this application or in acquiring the property? Uh, we know, we have some history of town of land and might want to avert say, as I, as I mentioned, uh, earlier, uh, clear-cut logging or, uh, you know, um, motor vehicle, uh, dirt bike trails, things like that.
So the the, a couple of things to that, and that's a good question, Chairman. Um, one is that, what part of my response to it is that if we were to accept, if the program was awarded for state funding, um, we, that limits what we can do with that parcel because that they're limited to, uh, basically passive outdoor recreation. And they have a whole list of what entails passive outdoor recreation. So basically, that is, you know, it's hiking, it's snowshoeing, it's, you know, it's any of the activities that do not really require the placement of infrastructure in there. So, for example, we wouldn't want to be going and paving a road in there for for, you know, paved trails, or we wouldn't want to be putting big pavilions in there, big structures in there. Um, that would be a problem. Um, we can put hiking trails, and we are recommending, our goal of this is primarily as, um, uh, a conservation area, um, which would be managed more for its ecological potential, but would also serve passive outdoor recreation. So there's an existing cart path that runs through the center of the parcel, right up the the center. Um, it's about a mile long. And then, um, we we're envisioning the possibility of putting additional side spur trails through there. There already are some logging that There already are some logging, the parcel's been logged several times in the past. So there are some old logging roads through there. Although, we're going very, very carefully about our proposal for that. We're not recommending a particular route to that. We're recommending that that would be a phased-in process. We would work with Joshua's Trust, who's agreed to sort of serve an advisory capacity with us because we don't want to get into a situation where we create trails that either impact the, impact the ecological integrity of the parcel, especially since there's a lot of wetlands, or that entail more maintenance than we really can deal with. We don't want to get into that. But we do envision, put it, you know, that it will be accessible by the public for, for passive recreational use. We would have to put in a parking area. There's good access, there's about 1,300 feet of access or frontage along Shoddy Mill Road. And there's an existing gate there where they would go in for the logging, and there's sort of an open or basient shrub-covered area. It's ideal for, it's dry, and it's ideal spot for creating an unimproved parking area that could fit, say, five to six cars. So that, we would, we would, we would need to put in along with some signage noting, noting that this was a public-accessible conservation area. Our vision on this is actually to create a 204-acre conservation area that would be the 162-acre parcel, the town-owned 38 acres. The four acres of Talbot will donate. So that whole 204-acre piece would become the Monument Hill, because it's centered on Monument Hill, Monument Hill Conservation Area. So it'd be sort of the first dedicated conservation area in town. So that's kind of how we positioned it, you know, that it really will be primarily used as, you know, for ecological purposes. We, we are not precluding forestry, although we're, we're stating that forestry would be associated with management for ecological purposes, not for timber harvest. And the same for potential hunting, for example, deer hunting. The only time that that would be considered would be for management considerations if it was determined that the, you know, the deer abundance in the, in the parcel was such that it was affecting the forest health of the parcel. You might have recalled, well, you might not have. I mean, I think we sent that to Board of Selectmen. The Conservation Commission weighed in on that with other parcels in the town. In a similar way, we looked at the health of the forests in the town-owned parcels and made a recommendation that at this time, you know, they're fairly healthy and didn't really need deer hunting in it, but, but left open the door that, you know, that's something that may need to be considered down the road for ecological health with some of those, some of those systems. So that's kind of how we're handling it. It's very similar to if the town-owned spaces that we, the 38 acres, we actually commissioned the, the environmental review team to do a review of that when we were considering accepting those parcels. And they had similar findings to what we're recommending with the Ladano parcel when they did their report for the same reasons. I mean, you know, that's pretty much its contiguous habitat. So the characteristics are very similar to the Ladano parcel, only writ large. So we're following pretty much those same recommendations from that ERT review that says this really supports conservation based on the forest quality here and the wetland quality and really minimal outdoor recreational use and not, not a, not a heavy hand in forestry or, or other applications. So that's kind of our approach as setting it up as a conservation area.
Okay. Well, other commissioners want to weigh in on these comments or questions?
Commissioner Monroe. I, I, I think I know where that place is that you're talking about. If you go on up Shoddy Mill Road on the right-hand side, you'll see a gate there.
Yes.
Almost when you, well, no, Burnet Brook Road.
No, this is, yeah, this is on Shoddy Mill. If you were at the, if you were at the transfer station?
Yeah.
So you're coming out of the transfer station. If you took a right, it's just up the road on the left. You'll see a green gate, a little pull-up and a green gate.
Oh.
That's the, it's that property, and it stretches almost to Boston Hill Road.
Oh, okay. No, that's a different place than I, what I thought. I was, I was thinking this was closer to Bolton.
It, it does border, if you look, you can see on the western side, it literally follows the Bolton line. This is actually an area where we did some boundary marking of the, of the town property. It does butt right up against Bolton, up on its northwestern corner there.
Okay. No, I don't.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I've never been there, so I'd be very interested in going there someday.
Beautiful property, actually.
Buy it.
Trying to see if it was another map that might give you a better indication of. Maybe this one, let's see.
Oh, that's good. Yeah.
Yeah, see, there's the, yeah, but you don't see that, doesn't it really have the roads on it as well? Here, maybe the topo map might be a better. So there's Monument Hill. You can see Boston Hill Road on the bottom there, Shoddy Mill up top. The Wales Road over there on the right, sort of see how it's positioned.
Oh, yeah.
And that's Bolton, that little, little box there, 90-degree angle. That's Bolton where you see shoddy, the word shoddy. On Shoddy Mill Road, that's Bolton. And there's the Burnet Brook System. You can see the Burnet Brook System. So there's that large wetland that used to be, I think, wasn't that shoddy, Shoddy Mill Pond? Historically, wasn't that the area that was ponded for the old blacksmith mill there?
I wouldn't know, but seems plausible, obviously, that, that large of a wetland area.
Yeah.
And there is, there is, as you pointed out, a little Shoddy Mill Road intersects, there is town-owned property behind the transfer station.
Correct.
Which goes down along Burnet Brook toward and ends at the, at the rail trail. Again, when I was on Conservation Commission, we examined that and looked at that for, again, possibility for passive recreation. And I noted on the map that you showed us earlier, there's some thought about having a trail system that would, yeah, okay, trail.
Yeah, that's exactly right, George, is, you know, one of the, one of the top opportunities. And this isn't part, I mean, we're showing them potential long-range plans here. The, the green line there, you see, that's the Hop River State Park Trail over there on the far right. That whole sort of tannish-colored parcels, 80-some acres of town land, which really doesn't have a lot of wetlands on it. It has the one little sort of water course. But that abuts the Hop River State Park Trail. So there's an opportunity to connect a hiking or biking trail that could connect to the parking area, the proposed parking area for the new conservation area. There would not be biking allowed in the conservation area. So that's something that we're sort of looking at, is do we want to shuttle people there? You know, we would provide a bike rack in the parking area because they would not be allowed the bike in the conservation area.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, did you have any questions or comments regarding the proposal?
That was an excellent presentation, and it makes all sense to go forward with that proposal that Hank gave.
Thank you.
Okay. Then I guess that what we should do here is to, well, I will make a motion to express the support of the IWWC for this acquisition. And that would then, of course, lead to drafting a letter of support, which I could provide to Hank Gruner for attachment to the proposal, especially if he can provide me with a work example. So again, I, I will make the formal motion to express the support of the Inland Wetlands Watercourses Commission for this acquisition. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so moved and seconded to express support for the proposal. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a vote. Commissioner Monroe.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So the motion carries 300. And we will, as I say, or I will draft a letter of support to convey to Conservation Commission.
Thank you all for your time.
You're welcome. And I'll be in touch with you, Hank. Okay, but, but, and thanks for your effort in, in, you know, really organizing and moving this thing forward. This, I'm sure, can have a lot better chances of success based on your efforts.
Well, it's been a team effort with, you know, we've had some great support from the folks at Planning and Zoning and from Eric Anderson, the town administrator. So there's been a team effort to move it forward. So hopefully, we'll, it'll be a positive outcome. Or we can, you know, if it doesn't sell, we can always go back next year and try again, I suppose.
That's the way it goes with grants. We know.
That's exactly right.
Okay, well, thanks again. And we'll move on now to item 8C. We still have, okay, so we're still looking at Old Farms Road.
Yeah, that was something that, I remember Jed, with the Planning and Zoning Commission, they had talked about having us discuss it at the next meeting. So I added it to the agenda. Of course, our planning and zoning representative isn't here tonight. But basically, I talked to George Korea about, I guess, when they originally got the permit approval, EverSource, they were going to put utility lines from Pine Ridge Drive, and they're going to put some more from Old Farms. And then when, let's see. Trying to think of what, um, yeah, so it's coming through the Wetlands Crossing on Pine Ridge Drive. And then one will split over to that property, and then another one is supposed to come from Old Farms and go down to that property. But I guess EverSource wanted them to put them all together and have like one connection from the road. So they decided to go all from Pine Ridge Drive through the Wetlands Crossing and then continue up into the, you know, through the woods and into the other property. So basically, for us, it's the same because there's already, there was already utilities going through that Wetlands Crossing.
Yeah, right. We, we approved that plan with.
And then where it splits off, there, that's outside the open review area.
Yeah.
So basically, we really don't have much of a, there really shouldn't be any change in our plan because it all is through unregulated area.
Right. It would be a net gain anyhow because wasn't there an issue with wetlands along or proximate to the driveway from Times Farm Road, if I recall?
Yeah, there is some, yeah, there's some. Some water on that side, yeah. So there would be less, less impact over there, of course.
Okay, well, it's basically just a heads up. Then we don't really have to take any action, and we'll see if there's any, you know, if, if Planning and Zoning really wants our input on that, I think we can provide it pretty readily.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question for Joe, Chair Elliott.
Yeah, go ahead.
Or a comment more than a question. It was my understanding that they, they actually built the, the bridge over the wetlands.
Yeah, it's in, it's in progress. It's in place. I have some pictures here. I've been keeping an eye on there. I go there like once a week or so to see what, what he's been doing now. So basically, everything's finished from Pine Ridge down to the Wetlands Crossing and then across the crossing. And then now he's, he's working on the other end, going up the hill. So the concrete culverts all in place. The drainage, the riprap channel. You know, erosion control mat is on the side of the, the hill. It's all graded. Yeah, it's looking, it's looking right. I mean, it's been really dry, so I'm great to do it.
We, we'd be interested in seeing some of those photos. I'd, I'd kind of be interested just to see what it is, you know, what, after all that discussion, what we came up with, to be honest with you.
Yeah, that'd be good. Right. Include that on the agenda for our next meeting when you're, with your report, you can give us a little update on that.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, anything else to come before the commission? We're at the end of our agenda. Our next regular meeting will be on Monday, October 3rd at 7:00 PM, same time, same place. Agenda to be distributed. Obviously, we've got a couple of items that we will need to vote on. Really, we'll have, you know, we'll, we'll have the applications that we received today to deal with. No other, nothing else pending. I could see on, on, online. So we'll see what we see. Okay, with that, I will say that with no objection, I will declare the meeting adjourned. But no objection. And Ed, who's not able to get his video to work, I can see him saying goodbye nevertheless.
Thank you, George, and thank you, George, and everybody.
Yeah, thanks for being here.
Nice.
Good night all, and you can press the little red leaf button.
Good night.